...commission meeting, we'll have our invocation by Reverend Glenda Brayman, pastor of St. James United Methodist Church. Also Reverend Brayman, can you lead us in the pledge afterwards? Will everyone please stand with us?
That is right. Gracious God, we come together as servants of the people, mindful that the community has put their trust in us. Help us to serve them to our best abilities, to use our resources wisely and well. Help us to make decisions that promote the common good. May our efforts be blessed by insight, guided by understanding and wisdom, as we seek to serve with respect for all. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Brayman. Roll call please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown. Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
All members are present and accounted for and you have a forum.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes listed in the agenda? Motion through.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, the second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Coes, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our proclamations and recognitions for... We have several. First up is a proclamation from March of Dimes. Mr. Chip Leibel, could you join me at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And again, we want to make sure we reckon, recognize Mr. Leibel, former county commissioner, City Black, a long-term businessman, let's give him a round of applause. This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, one in thirty-three babies born in the United States are born with the birth defect, resulting in billions of dollars of cost for care and accounting for twenty percent of all infant deaths. The March of Dimes, a voluntary health organization, began in nineteen thirty-eight when radio announcer and comedian Eddie Cantor urged his listeners to send their spare dimes to the White House to contribute to the fund for finding a cure for polio. It's working to assure that healthy lives in American babies are here. Whereas, twenty nineteen marks the eighty-first year of the March of Dimes, the eighty-first year that the March of Dimes has been safeguarding America's infant health and has been a pioneer in preventing birth defects, the nation's number-one health problem, through programs of research, community services, education, advocacy, and prenatal care. And whereas, the March of Dimes kicked off the twenty nineteen fundraising campaign on February twenty-sixth, which is chaired by Chip Leibel, and will continue until the day of the official March of Dimes, March for Babies event on May eleventh, two thousand nineteen. The two thousand nineteen fundraising goal is seventy-five thousand dollars and one hundred percent participation from the schools. Putnam County is proud to be the only county in the nation where there is one hundred percent participation from schools in the past, and whereas the nation's hopes for assuring future generations a healthy start in life depends upon the efforts and commitment of all Americans to participate in fundraising events like picking blue jeans for babies, to sell chocolate, footprints and other government, corporate and individual fundraising events leading up to the March for Babies at the Palaca Riverfront Park. The March for Babies, formerly known as Walk America, has been successful for forty-nine years, raising more than two-point-four billion dollars for the March of Dimes mission to improve the health of babies by preventing birth defects and infant mortality. Now therefore, I tell you, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim, February twenty-sixth through May eleventh, two thousand nineteen, as March of Dimes fundraising days in the City of Palaca, and we urge all citizens in the community to support the important efforts of the March of Dimes and helping give babies a healthier start in life by participating and contributing to various March for Babies teams fundraisers. The witness were up, appear to set my hand, it caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this twentieth day of March of the year of our Lord, two thousand nineteen. Taro Little Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, all entertain a motion.
Motion through.
There's a motion on the floor, and the second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We want to present this to you.
Thank you Mayor Hill. Thank you everybody. Appreciate the opportunity and I'm very proud to chair this worthwhile event this year in Putnam County and um, he's being a little shy about it, but last year, this man raised over seventy thousand dollars as a chair last year, let's give him a round of applause. He was awesome, Mayor Hill, last year. We do have a goal, like he said, this year, seventy-five thousand dollars, which I feel confident we'll reach without a doubt. May eleventh is the march and the City of Palaca graciously provides the riverfront. It's a great event, I really hope the community will come out and support it and everything in it. Let's see what else. I wanted to read something real quick. In Florida, two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand babies are born each and every year. The work of the March of Dimes touches each one of them. They are born healthy prematurely with birth defect or other health complications. Each year in Florida, twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-seven babies are born preterm, that's one in ten babies born too soon. Six-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-six babies are born with a birth defect. One-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-two babies die before reaching their first birthday. Prematurity and birth defects are the leading cause of infant mortality. The medical and social cost of preterm birth in the nation is about one-point-two billion dollars. So this crusade, we have to keep going and we can do better and we have, we've just reached all kinds of milestones and will continue so. Before I forget about it, which I won't, in the proclamation a minute ago, you heard that Putnam County leads the nation in school participation, one hundred percent of our schools get involved and they do the ball. That do this, when you see that chocolate for sale, buy it. Last year's, last year's teams, let me read them real quick. Top team fundraiser, Seminole Electric, Interlock Elementary, Putnam County Clerk of Courts, Isaiah Health, and Putnam County Tax Collector, tax collectors, excuse me, I hate that position anyway. Thank y'all, appreciate your attention here, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please come out and support the March of Dimes this year.
Next up, Palaca Trail Town Designation, Craig McLean. And others. And our Trail Town Committee. We've got the, we've got the committee here, they've got a great presentation for us. Before we do that, I've got Mr. Carr here with you guys as well. So I've got Robbie Correa, we've got Mayor Garcia here as well. We want to make sure that we read this proclamation, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, a trail town is a community located along or close to a priority non-motorized recreational trail or recognized trail system, such as hiking, walking, jogging, biking, paddling, or rail trails, where users can venture off the trail to enjoy services and unique heritage of nearby welcoming cities. And whereas, a trail town is a safe place where both residents and users can walk, bike, jog, find goods and services and easily access the trail and town, where the trail is an integral part of the community which residents use to access work, schools, parks, and shops. And whereas, trail towns are friendly vibrant places which encourage users to visit its restaurants, grocery stores, quaint local shops and lodging, and offer clean streets, wide sidewalks, back racks, and benches, while being linked to the long-distance green and/or blue trail corridors in the Florida Greenways and Trail System. And whereas, Palaca is a hub for five trails, including the Bartscham Trail and the soon-to-open St. Augustine to Palaca Trail and boasts the first paddling Blue Age Trail, so designated by the state of Florida located in and along the St. John's River and tributaries. And whereas, the City of Palaca partnered with local civic government and trail support groups to develop a trail town application, which was submitted to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection on October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Palaca was notified on January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, that it had been designated as Florida's sixth trail town. Now therefore, I tell you, Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of March thirty-first through April sixth, two thousand nineteen, as Palaca Trail Town Recognition Week in the City of Palaca, and we urge all citizens to learn about, utilize, and care for our trail systems and participate in the trail opening ceremony from Palaca to St. Augustine. The witness were up, appear to set my hand, it caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this twentieth day of March of the year of our Lord, two thousand nineteen. Taro Little Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, all entertain a motion.
Motion through.
There's a motion on the floor, the second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We want to present this to you guys. Thank you. Next up, employee recognition. Black Police Department, Chief Shaw, are you around, Captain Newcomb? We've got a recognition right now and this comes from the Commission of the Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation Incorporated. This letter was written to Chief Shaw, February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Dear Chief Shaw, it is with great pleasure and enthusiasm that we inform you that Ms. Megan Warman has been selected by the Commission of the Florida Law Enforcement Accreditation Incorporated, CFA, as a twenty, as the twenty-eighteen Assessor of the Year. Ms. Warman was selected from a field of extremely qualified nominees for this prestigious honor. She has demonstrated beyond any doubt she possesses the passion, integrity, dedication, experience, and knowledge as an, as an Assessor to distinguish herself as an outstanding role model. Megan's nomination confirms the caliber of recipient of this prestigious award. The Commission will honor Ms. Warman and other award winners during the reception at the June Conference on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six-thirty. She will also be recognized during the CFA Commission meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, at ten AM. The June Conference will be held at the Omni Orlando Resort at Champions Gate. Thank you for being committed to Florida's accreditation process, providing Ms. Warman the support she needs to do an award-winning job. People like Megan, who lived their lives with excellence, keep Florida accreditation the preeminent law enforcement accreditation program in the United States. Sincerely, Lori Mizell, Executive Director. Let's give her a round of applause.
Commissioners, don't know who I am, Matt Newcomb, the Support Service Captain of the Police Department. I'm here for Chief Shaw, he has the flu and was out yesterday and today. But we just wanted to express to the Commission as well as to our community, we are very proud to have Megan on our team. Not only is Megan our accreditation manager, she's also an Assessor for the State for accreditation and just recently she received her team leader status. So she now goes to other police agencies within the state that are accredited and meets two other assessors and ensuring that other agencies are doing the proper things to be accredited as we are as well as the Putnam County Sheriff's Offices. So thank you.
And when the Police Department were accredited, there were no corrective actions during that time. We had one of the only perfect, we had one of the only perfect reports that was there. Again, thank you very much for being here. Next up, we have a presentation. Father Daughter Dance, Lafar Davis is the organizer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am hoping all is well. I see some familiar faces, but for some of you that don't know who I am, my name is Lafar Davis. I am the visionary and founder of the Heart and Soul Youth Fine Arts Club. But tonight, I bring you greetings on behalf of the twenty-nineteen First Annual Father-Daughter Dance, Katillion Style. Along with myself, we have another planning committee member here, which is Commissioner Tammy McCaskill, who I have had the opportunity to work with. If you know, I have presented two huge productions in Palaca, which is our Holiday Nutcracker. The Heart and Soul was established through the underground program through the Arts Council at the Laramore Arts Center. But this year, I have been given the vision for a Father-Daughter Dance, which will be held here in Palaca, Florida. This is the first annual because it's the first one that has been held in Palaca. There has been several around the county, but here in Palaca will be our first annual. It's going to take place on Saturday, June eighth, twenty nineteen, at the Palaca High School from six to nine PM. So I am here thanking you all for inviting me and allowing me to be on the agenda and to cordially invite you all to come to this event, to honor our fathers. It's in the month of June, which is the day that is the month that we celebrate Father's Day. You do not have to be a father, even father figure, but I do have a power presentation that I would like to present to you all. A Father-Daughter Dance like none other. Very special, very elegant, and full of class. It's a unique and unique event no one wants to miss. Our fathers and father figures are welcome to this Katillion Style Dance, to engage in a socially educated and respectful night. How about it?
Minor hiccup.
So while that is lathering, I'll continue to talk. Again, this event takes place on Saturday, June eighth. There are tickets which will help towards the expenses of the event. The tickets are twelve dollars. If you come as a father figure and a daughter, the ticket is twenty-five dollars. Included in that admission, you get a very formal dinner. You receive, if you're participating in the cornbread dance, you get a wrist corsage for the daughters, and for the father figures, you get a boot in here. So it's going to be very epic, it's going to be amazing. It's not the traditional Father-Daughter Dance, it's the Katillion Style, where it's a unique style of dance, where everyone has a formal sit-down dinner. We have guest speakers, a father and a daughter pair that will be speaking. We also have a father-daughter pair that will be doing a song selection, and that song selection will be, again, a pair with a father and daughter. We have a father and daughter that will be doing the welcome, but our program consists of father-daughter pairs. Now, if you are business owner, if you would like to contribute to this event, feel free, I do have ads, sponsorship opportunities that, it's an opportunity for you to expose your business in our program and also our banner. Is the video continuing to play? Now, if you would like to participate, I do have flyers going around, if you would like to contact myself. Our next, our next rehearsal will be Sunday, April second, April seventh, from three to four thirty, at CH Price Middle School. And again, this is a time for our fathers and our daughters to receive a bond, highlighting the bond between the father and daughter. Again, you do not have to be a biological father, you could be an uncle, a cousin, a brother, a godfather, grandfather, any father figure, please feel welcome to attend this event. And it is going to get to Palaca High School, and the Palaca High School is definitely going to be transformed. When you walk into that high school common area, you're going to forget where you are because the decor, the decoration is going to be amazing. It's definitely going to be an event that you want to attend. Now, the attire for this event, because we want to give the father figures and the daughters an opportunity to collaborate and coordinate, matching their personalities, we would like you to come very formal wear, so any, any color, any style, but we just ask that you stay in that concept of formal, because that makes the Katillion Style of the event. So I guess we're not able to continue with the video, but the video is just to show you how intimate and intimate setting that it will be.
And if they have any questions, they can, my numbers are available.
Yes. If you have any questions, if you would like to do any charitable contribution, feel free to contact me, my telephone number is on there, but also I have flyers if you want to receive a flyer.
Thank you very much. Ms. Davis, before you leave, can you just tell us, give us a little bit of your background, growing up in Palaca and some of the things that you've done from an educational standpoint and also from working in community service?
Yes. I graduated from Palaca High School, class of two thousand and one, and I was able to continue my education by receiving a scholarship from the University of South Florida, where I studied mass communication broadcast news, and I also received an undergraduate degree in student leadership. After graduating from the University of South Florida, I then went on to receive my master's degree, my master's degree in Business Administration. After receiving my master's degree, I did pursue my childhood dream of becoming a professional cheerleader for the Jacksonville Jaguars, and I chaired five consecutive years, and I just decided that I wanted to come back to my own hometown to give back to the youth in Putnam County. And so that's what I have been doing, I've been coming back and forth, commuting back and forth from Jacksonville, Florida to Palaca, to hold Saturday dance classes, theory classes, and not just those classes, but I've been continuing to give back by hosting events like this, our Father-Daughter Dance, giving our children, our youth, an opportunity to do more. You can go to any other city and any other city has this, but me, growing up in Palaca, knowing the ins and outs, my heart is here and I want all of our youth to have those opportunities. And that's why I continue and continue to have visions given to me and having the help from our community, but I can't continue to do this just alone with a passion and a heart to do it, I have to have the support from our community. So again, I'm just asking you all to fill in your hearts to come participate in this Father-Daughter Dance on June eighth, Saturday, June eighth, twenty nineteen, from six to nine AM.
Let's give her a round of applause. So you guys feel the passion when she speaks about the things that she's done. Lafar Davis is truly a hometown hero for Palaca, and so for that, we're going to give you the Palaca Pride Hometown Hero Award, presented to Lafar Davis, and grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and success of the City of Palaca and Putnam County through community advocacy, Palaca City Commissioner's staff, March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any comments from the Commission?
I think you're getting a weird rap, right?
Yes, that's from Ed.
And that family has been here contributing to our community. It's the, it's the woman, and you are a good example for us, thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd like to also thank her for her dedication and commitment to the community, the young ladies, a lot of times we don't have people to look up to for leadership and you certainly exemplify all of that, and thank you for your passion for this community.
I also want to say thank you as well, it's kind of hard not to repeat whatever one else said, but I was one of those individuals that felt the passion for my city and came back home, so to see you do the same thing and to see so many others do the same thing speaks volumes to those that come after us, to know that you can go away, obtain whatever you need to attain, and come back home and make a difference, and you are part of the difference that we are making here in this great city, and I greatly appreciate you and thank you for what you are doing.
Thank you, thank you.
And I, to words cannot begin to express how much I, I thank you for what you're doing. The train was already moving and I'm just honored that you decided to stop by and pick me up and ask me aboard. Thank you so much, you're cut from good cloth, I love you, I love your family, and just can't thank all of you enough for what you're doing. Thank you Lafar.
And just, just one else.
I just wanted to say thank you so much. I can remember going to a Father-Daughter Dance many decades ago and it was one of the most wonderful things that I've been able to do because my dad worked so much, like three jobs, and so going to that Father-Daughter Dance is something that I'll remember for my whole life. I'm so, so glad that you're bringing this and other events back to Putnam County, thank you.
So Ms. Davis is brought, those events, she does dance classes, she's hosted a couple of different plays for the kids here, most of it she finds out her own pockets, she gets some support from the community, but she takes off from working Jacksonville, comes to Palaca and does this stuff for free.
Yes.
Because she wants the kids to have opportunities to be exposed to things. How many kids we have in here who are with Ms. Davis? Just raise your hand right now. Can you guys come up front for me right quick? These kids get exposed to that, it's just second to none, and it's the one thing that we want to see in Palaca, we want to see our young people, our young professionals, our millennials come back, come back home once they've gone off and been educated and all those other things. We want them to come back home and raise families, and that's what this is all about, making sure that we continually cultivate the most precious resource that we have in this community, and we just thank you for all that you do, and we know that you don't like to be formally recognized, but we want to make sure that you entertain that you are a hero to Palaca, and we are proud that you represent us where we are. We'll take some photos after the break. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on. Next up is our Swat Tobacco Point of Sales Awareness, Mary Garcia.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to introduce some of our team members. And let them get started because I know that it's a long evening. I want to introduce, David Powell has come back to help us as we're going through some of our changes in our tobacco program, and Jenny Ramos is our new program, tobacco program director, so, and then we've got a student with us today that's going to actually give our speech, so I'm going to get out of the way and go. so I'm going to get out of the way and go.
Hi. It's so great to meet you all, and thank you all for having me. I'm Jenny Ramos, and the tobacco program manager in sixth position. And so, I'm in good hands. Um, and today, our SWAT students, students working as tobacco is going to present. Um, but first, I just want to say a couple of things. So, most tobacco habits actually develop before the age 18. So, between adolescents, 11 to 17, um, about 90% or 9 out of 10 of current tobacco users started, um, tried their first cigarette before their 18th birthday. Um, so, we all know that it's not legal, um, to purchase tobacco before 18. Um, in addition, nicotine, which is in all tobacco products, is in most of the electronics cigarette products, and it's in all of the jewel products. Um, it's highly addictive, and it's very damaging to the, um, excuse me. Adolescent brain. Um, what it does to the brain, the younger brain, so before age, our brains develop until about 25. Um, so, before then, um, it can harm parts of the brain that control mood and pulse control, um, let's see, attention, and also learning. So, with that being said, um, just last year, our Putnam County youth, 11 to 17, about 18.9% actually reported having ever tried cigarettes. Um, so, with that being said, it's my pleasure to, um, introduce, thank you, introduce Neela Patel. She is our long-standing SWAT youth. She's been part of our club for five years now, and she's really an advocate for our community and for tobacco initiatives.
So, 1 in 10 Putnam County youth currently use tobacco. This is double than that of Florida. And also, 2 in 10 Putnam County youth use tobacco, including puka and electronic device. Um, this rate represents an alarming public health issue that started at the point of sale. The point of sale is the marketing and promotion of tobacco products in retail environment like gas station and convenience stores. This is the tobacco industry's main marketing approach. If you're still not sure what tobacco point of sale is, think of the tobacco ads when you walk into a store, um, on the windows, the doors, pull above gas toppers, by the secret display. Think of the flavor, the colored package, the discount for buying two or three packets instead of this one. This is point of sale. Tobacco companies spend almost a billion-dollar day in Florida for the point of sale. Tobacco companies gives retailers discounts for placing tobacco products in the best spots to get youth attention. Tobacco companies target low-income communities, flooding them with images that us youths grow up seeing. It is not our fault we grow up to become tobacco users. It is not our fault we can't quit. The tobacco companies are controlling us, and we need to take back the control. The tobacco retail license will help give us our county the control to monitor what is going on. One of the ways the state of Florida is suggesting we counter point-of-sale marketing is through a local tobacco retail license. This can restrict advertising, raise age to purchase, limit how close tobacco retailers are to our schools, and control the density of tobacco retailers in our county, especially the one clustered together in the low-income communities. A tobacco retail license helps give us a way to enforce these regulations and provide accountability for enforcement. The associated fee also helps local compliance checks. As of 2017, more than 150 cities and counties in Florida had adopted the local TRL. Alachua County, which is our neighboring county, is the first Florida, in the, the first county in Florida to create a tobacco retail license. I challenge you to look around our community and see things from the youth perspective. And I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Dave Powell, an advocate for tobacco protection. Do you answer any questions?
Thank you, everybody, for having me again. Uh, since retiring in December, I've been active with St. John's County Tobacco Group Partnership and staying busy in tobacco control. Uh, it's a passion that we have been doing it for many, many years, and something that probably never stopped with me. So, I want to give you guys a heads up of what's going on around the county and around the state. As Neela mentioned, recently, Alachua County passed a local tobacco retail license, which will restrict the proximity of tobacco retailers to schools within 1,000 feet. Uh, it's going to raise the age to purchase tobacco to 21 in Alachua County. And St. John's County is also currently looking at a similar ordinance. So, I've been working with them, and we'll be presenting at the, uh, St. John's County Commission meeting in April about this. The county attorneys have been very supportive, and I know three of the commissioners over there are supportive of this as well. So, I'm looking forward to having this passed there. So, we're going to be standing between two counties that are going to apparently raise the age to purchase tobacco to 21, but with orders. So, what's a little tobacco retail license? Uh, a retail license is a vehicle with which we can enforce, uh, compliance for age restriction sales. It's effective. A recent study found that young people who live in communities with tobacco retail has policies that covers the cost of various compliance checks are 33% less likely to start using cigarettes, 26% less likely to start using e-cigarettes. It's enforceable. Uh, when selling e-cigarettes to minors is prohibited, there is no statewide mechanism to enforce compliance at all. There is no restriction on who can sell e-cigarettes and where they can be sold. A local TRL fixes the problem, requiring retailers to sell e-cigarettes to abide by the same requirements and penalty structure as those that sell other tobacco products. It's economical, it's self-funded, it saves floridians, and the fees are minimal. Uh, the fees are used to support compliance checks by local law enforcement, um, and make sure that the retailers are staying within the bounds of that retail license. The cost, I think, for the Alachua County license was $230. So, it's not expensive, but it's enough to make it important to the retailers. I'm looking forward to also coming to you guys with some language for a resolution made at the next meeting to encourage our county commission to adopt such an ordinance. We're going to be educating the local commissioners on tobacco retail licensing and what can and cannot be done, and what the effective means to do it are. So, we're looking forward to getting support from these local municipalities to encourage our county commission. There's also some state legislation that we're watching right now. There's a bill that's making its way to the Senate that would, in fact, raise the age to purchase tobacco in state Florida to 21. Uh, I just heard today that the state of Illinois and the state of Washington have passed legislation that would raise the age to purchase tobacco to 21, and has been placed on their governors' desks. There are five other states in the country that have currently done that. That's one of over 300 municipalities. Uh, the 2009 Tobacco Act that was passed gave local municipalities the power to implement age restrictions. They set the floor at 18 with the FDA, but local municipalities aren't able to legislate higher ages that they so desire. And like I said, currently, over 300 cities and municipalities in the United States have done something. You all have copies of this in your act. There's also a copy of the ordinance from Alachua County, as it was written and passed. Uh, if you have any questions, I would have the answer.
Thank you very much. And again, as always, we want to thank SWAT for their commitment, uh, to this community and to our youth and in the efforts. Um, Ms. Garcia, if you don't mind, can you come back for just one second? So, Mary Garcia, her name's everywhere. She's on every committee, from Blue Asian Trails to Trail Town to the Health Department. Uh, she sings. She'll sing the National Anthem. She'll sing it in English and Spanish. She's, she works hard, and she works tirelessly for this community. Uh, she's one of those people that never says no. And we love you for it, and again, you're one of our heroes as well. And in recognition... So, again, another one of Palaka. So, a Palaka Hometown Hero Award awarded to Mary Garcia in grateful recognition of your devotion to the advancement and success of the city of Palaka and Putnam County through community advocacy, Palaka City Commission and Staff, March 28th, 2019.
Don't cry too often. Boy, how many... I gotta get taller because I... They tease me. Thank you. It's, um, it's funny because I left my dad from, at the hospital and ran over here so I could be over here, and then I need to get over there now and get back to him. But he'll be laughing at this, so he'll be so grateful. Um, you know, this is one of those things, and I think LaFara said it the best. You know, your family's from here, your kids are from here, my nieces and nephews are from here. My family all grew up here. We love our environment. We have so many resources in Putnam County and Palaka. We just have to be able to pass on that passion to other people. And, um, and I, you know, I think the mayor, when I first met him, he said, "What are we going to do about the health in Putnam County?" And I asked him what he was doing on April Fool's Day, and then I realized, "Oh, dear God, I'm going to have to go buy a pair of tennis shoes" because we started a walk with the mayor back then, that many years ago, and we haven't stopped doing things for Palaka since. I know.
I hear you.
We're still trying. But thank you, guys, so much. This, I mean, this is such a surprise. I'm so grateful to you all for this. It's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to say, wherever you see Ms. Mary, you see a smile, and she's going to greet you with a smile. And I believe I'm not the only one that every time I see her that I look forward to it because sometimes I need that smile and a hug. And so, thank you for that, and thank you for all that you do for Putnam County.
Thank you so much.
Well, Mary, you're a good example for us because your hometown...
I'm following you, honey. You're a hard act to follow.
Your hometown girl that came back and just doesn't talk about it, but you are there. I told you, you've been here so much, but I believe you're going for the chair after a while. We're glad to have you here, and thank you so much for it.
Thank you, thank you.
She's my second wife, so my work wife. Well, we always end up at events and we're working together on a number of different things, but again, thank you.
Actually, he's the boyfriend. He always wants me to do stuff.
But certainly, thank you for... Yeah, you divorced him. Okay. Well, okay, but thank you for all you do and certainly, um, giving everything back to the community.
Wow, that's amazing. Thank you so much.
I too want to thank you for all that you do, and of course, your smile and always, I can count on a hug, and your passion is contagious. Thank you so much, LaFara.
Thank you so much, guys.
Everything that everybody else said, and you have the best bling for the bling bags at all of the events, especially the ones where we have to get out and sweat some. We thank you for that, too. Always got the bottle of water ready, too.
Absolutely. We appreciate it, and we, um, we're going to be doing some walks, and then we'll do our March from Frolic again in the fall, so we look forward to that. So, we'll be getting in shape.
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next up, Commissioner McCaskill, can you join me? She gives me another reminder. It's another month. What can we say? This is the time that we have more people in chairs than ever before.
Yeah.
And you guys, again, we thank you guys for waiting so patiently. Uh, but we wanted to make sure we recognize some very special women in our community. Uh, this is the month that's designated for us to recognize women in our community and throughout this country who've done wonderful things. And those, the two ladies that we recognize today are just two of many that sit in this room alone. And we're recognizing different people throughout the community from different walks of life because we want people, we want our young people to see folks who've come back and they serve. The one thing that we want everyone to realize is that if you give from your heart, if you do it, the blessings will come to you. And it's not about money, it's not about anything else, but it's about making sure that our young people have positive examples in their life. And that's what we see, and those two young ladies are true examples of that, as well as everyone else in this room. But right now, we want to make sure we recognize another special group, which is our educators in here. Um, we've got our educators in the room today. When you guys just raise your hand, you're usually somewhere around the hallway. We just want to thank you because it takes a clear day to get out. And you guys, I think, are, maybe, maybe the God, but we want to make sure you guys realize that we appreciate all that you do helping groom our kids because oftentimes, you see the kids more than a lot of their family members actually see them and interact with them on a regular basis. And so, again, we just thank you for that. Secondly, the family members that are here, the friends, the neighbors, the grandparents, everyone in this room today, we want you to stand up right now so that we can recognize you and thank you for the job that you've done with these young girls today. I'll be remiss if I don't recognize Colonel Wells who's in here today. And then Sarah's also, but thank you guys as well. So, one of those young folks you have, you come on up and lift your hand for us right before we get started. You're not leaving early.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor and commissioners for having us tonight. Uh, I am the scoutmaster of Troop 235, which is sponsored by the Shrine Club of East Palaka. So, I have a group of young men with me tonight. They're studying citizenship in the community. And as part of that, they are learning how their local government works, what it takes to be a good local citizen, to be involved in the government, and, uh, and how to communicate with your commissioners, to have their thoughts heard in the community. And, uh, they've, uh, they're finishing up a very detailed study of this in the mayor's mansion. One of the last things they have to do is watch government at work, and that's what they're here to do tonight. I appreciate the city of Palaka hosting us. Then after that, we'll have a discussion on what they saw and learned tonight as they move forward with their citizenship studies.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to ask you another month's presentations. We're going to ask that the representatives from the school come forward, but the students, as their names are called, we're going to gather around the front of the room. Uh, once we've done that, we will take a brief recess, at which time, we'll take a group photo for the newspaper, and then we will allow everyone to take an opportunity to memorialize. So, we'll have to let you come up and take pictures of the group, and then we'll take individual pictures with the student, as well as any family members that want to come in and join because we want to make sure that you get an opportunity to savor this moment and memorialize it with your photographs. And so, time is of no issue until you start taking too long. First up, from CLOPR 6th grade, Senator Jordan McCullough. From Children's Reading Center Charter School, David Ann Brueggen. From the 8 Miller School, Alexander Perkins. From James Delo Elementary, Red Seer Phelps. From Dixie Middle School, Darius Gibbons. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Morgan Wiggs. From Mellon Elementary, Rihanna Lawson. I'm going to take it your name is Ree Ree. From Moseville Elementary, Jaheem Hall. From Palaka High School, Kalia Roberts. From Penn Baptist Academy, Paisley Crosby. From Penn Academy of Arts and Sciences, William Payne. So, we want to give out our, want to give out an award winners, a round of applause. Commissioner McCaskill, you got your words for it? Commissioner McCaskill, you got your words for it?
How was it exciting to sit in the light, because we have a crowd in the room, and I get to see all the kids that I really don't get to see, because I work out, and you're walking, and teach, and work, and in walking. So, this was an exciting time of the month for me, when I get to see all of the kids. So, congratulations, guys, and continue to deliver example.
Every time we do this, I try to leave you with something that I learned as a third grader, and this time, I'll see the greens glass, and it's a saying that stuck with me now that I'm 46. It essentially says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody." You guys are someone special. You're destined for greatness. We are so proud of you and all that you're doing. Keep up the good work. Continue to represent your family, this community, and we look for you guys to be the leaders in the future. So, again, congratulations, and thank you very much. Also, Ms. Grant, nominated as Assistant Principal. Great job getting around. Tell us a little bit about the nomination.
So, a couple weeks ago, I was nominated as one of the top five finalists in the state of Florida for a senior year. Shocked, to say the least, but so humbled and so grateful, because this is my opportunity now to show everything that we've been working on, just as a community. We have worked very hard at Mellon Elementary School to reclaim what it really means to be a member of the club and show that leadership ownership and high expectation for our students, and so, this is just a great opportunity for us to kind of show that off.
Now, we're gonna have all our students remain. We're gonna take a quick recess, and we're gonna take a photo for the newspaper, and then we'll take photos for the families, as well. Coming in here to talk about town hall meetings. Mr. Clark, if you come forth, give your name and address, so we'll have it for the record. Anyone else who's coming forward, give your name and address, go to the microphone. You've got three minutes on your topics of discussion. You'll actually be taking on the topics. Welcome, Mr. Clark.
It's a honor to call the Politeville Mission Road, Palatka Police Department. I wanna know, I wanna hold a town hall meeting with the community and Palatka Police Department, but why has I gotta be charged to use the Price Martin Center to do it?
We charge everybody to use the Price Martin Center. We charge everybody to use the Price Martin Center.
Why is the rental fee included to it?
Why is it? 'Cause it takes money to run it? So, what's your, what do you want, what else you wanna know?
So, how can you get a dentist, where the commissioners can bring a town hall meeting with the Palatka Police Department?
Town hall meeting?
Yeah, with the community.
What's it, what's it pertaining to?
For harassment and over policing.
You got a complaint process that you should go through. If there's harassment, you believe there's issues of harassment, there's a complaint process. I don't wanna give you legal advice here, but there's a process in place. If you contact the Palatka Police Department, they can share with you the process that you go through. It's a statutory process that's in place. If you believe that that exists, file the appropriate documents, it will trigger action by the police department, and then you'll be fine. And so, if the process is where it happens, if you, if you don't, if you believe that anything is done that creates situations where there's harassment or unfair treatment, the appropriate thing to do will be to go through the process. I've filed several claims in the past, representing individuals who believe that their civil rights were violated, and that's the process that we follow. And so, if you're unwilling to follow the process, which in fact leads to an investigation, which determines whether there is fault or not, or you to go to legal counsel, those are your choices, then I think those are the first steps before you go any further. Have you talked to the Palatka Police Department?
I talked, I told, Captain told me yesterday.
Did he inform you of the complaint process?
He was found, informed, and then I told him about, I wanna hold a town hall meeting. He gave me a couple numbers to get, to come down here, to talk to some people about getting the building.
So, if you wanna have it at a city, if you wanna have it at a city facility, where fees are there, there are a number of facilities where there are fee structures in place for holding events. If you wanna have it at one of those facilities, then there's a fee associated with it. If there are other facilities out there, there may be opportunities. You can have town hall meetings in churches, you can have them in other places as well. And so, those are all processes that are out there, but as far as the fee structures are placed, those are passed, and they're passed by policy, and they're already there. And so, those are things that you have, and so, that's what I would tell you. And so, you have, you don't have to have a town hall meeting at a city facility, you can have it anywhere, and that's a totally different process.
So, how about open government?
This, I'm not gonna sit here and give you legal advice on any of that stuff. You got three minutes. Your time is up, but if you wanna talk to me, you can talk to me after this, and I'll spend as much time as you want. Anybody else here for public comment? Seeing no one. Close public comment. Next up is our consent agenda. Item 3 on the agenda, consent agenda, or any items on the consent agenda, other than item 3D that you guys wish to have removed.
Now, tell me where Ocelot's Tree is. I've been trying to figure it.
Is it on the consent agenda?
Yeah, Ocelot's Tree.
Ocelot's Tree. It's right next to Oak Hill, not Oak Hill, Westview Cemetery.
Oh, okay.
I'm right up a grill.
Is that item E?
Item D.
E. Yeah, I'm a good examiner. Except all items excluding D for discussion.
Second.
Motion for the second, any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. That motion was by Commissioner Campbell, seconded by Commissioner Moore. Question is called by Commissioner McCaskill. Moving forward, item 3D on the agenda, the resolution number 2019 R-36 issuing Class A Special Events Permit, 19-22 for the 2019 Palatka Blue Craft Festival, 5/24 to 5/27/19, set for permit provisions, three code of the V's, TYP is the applicant. Ms. Grant?
I had some questions for to Ms. Tucker, who is in class tonight, so she can be here this evening, regarding the Sunday dates and times, and it showed that it began, that the noise ordinance, permission to exceed the noise ordinance, began at 8:00 a.m. So, Mr. Parsons, are you, come on up. So, I looked at the schedule, and it showed that you have a gospel singing at 10:30. The ordinances of the City of Palatka State that you cannot violate noise within so many distance of a church prior to 12:30, and you can't sell alcohol prior to 12:30 p.m. on a Sunday. So, I've amended the resolution showing that we cannot do, give you permission on the noise ordinance, can't have, I'm not, where is the gospel gonna be?
Okay, so I can, can I kinda start?
Sure.
So, we're kinda looking at doing things just a little different. So, it's only gonna be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The thought of Sunday is that we're gonna have a community, community-wide church service type.
Okay.
We met this morning with three of the downtown churches. We're looking to get others, and then we've got some others as well that will be involved. So, that'll actually start about nine o'clock, and then it'll go into, I think we've changed it up a little bit since that, we probably won't have that gospel singer, but we're gonna do some type of music that'll go to, and then it'll go on, you know, afternoon to the regular music and then the ordinance. So, it will be, you know, it's a church oriented, the church that's down there is a part of, you know, our, the whole process, and they, they're actually, you know, big supporters from the meeting today.
Any other question?
Yeah, so the church is part of your event?
Correct, correct. It's gonna be a community-type choir, you know, different churches are gonna, you know, bring people to have, you know, one big choir, choir that's, you know, all singing together, and they're, the church around the corner is participating as well.
Is it not something that we could assist with, maybe from the standpoint of they, if they were gonna be doing it from a variance, maybe? I don't know how it works.
We approve it, we approve it down the time count.
Right, and according to the ordinance, you can't approve anything before 12:30 on Sunday morning.
You can't do what? We change alcohol.
Well, the alcohol ordinance...
It's a, it's a, I don't...
But the noise, it's amplified.
I mean, they can sing as long as they, it's not amplified, am I right?
Well, it's within so many feet of a church.
But the church that's in...
Is it part of the, that's what I was asking.
And I had asked if there was a church service, 'cause that's what, kinda what that looks like, is sort of connected with a church service. Is it the amphitheater?
No, it'll be, we have a stage, it'll be on the stage, so that it's, you know, just like a regular, you know, concert-type thing, it'll be the choir. It'll be, there's a map there, it'll be basically where the bass masters have their, their stage over with the river in the background. And alcohol will be served at noon or after the, you know, the normal times that it would be.
Do you have to have amplified?
Don, can you... You approve amplified sound for fishing tournaments at six o'clock in the morning on Sundays all the time? We just did it for Bassmaster Relief. Did we talk to council about this beforehand?
Well, the...
What section are you, wherever singing, bands in?
Special events.
Special events?
We just did it for Bassmaster.
Well, that's at like 6:00 a.m. before church starts.
The church is a part of the organization, I mean, a part of...
So, we just, we're just hearing that.
Well, I was asking, Don, is it, is, can we, even though it's in the ordinance, if the church is already part of it, it, can we, as a commission, approve the variance?
Or do we need a lot of support from the church saying that they wouldn't?
Right. That's, that's a question, too.
You can approve it.
Right. Well, I just wanna get counsel.
While we're, while we're going through that, on the grounds of looking for the ordinance, Ms. you have a speaker card for this one.
Because this is a unique, it's just a unique situation here, which the church is already part of, so we just need to talk about it.
First Presbyterian is not the only church downtown, and while the ordinance, mayor may not specify so many feet from the church about the noise ordinance, that I've read several times, I don't recognize the ordinance, say anything about so many feet from anything, it just has certain requirements for noise during certain periods of time. First Baptist Church is two blocks from here, Liberty Baptist Church is next door to City Hall, St. Marcus is across the street, there are many, many churches in the downtown area, and all of them hold services on Sunday morning. As to the bass fishing and other tournaments, those tournaments do start at three or four o'clock in the morning, or at six, and they are not disturbing the churches because of the time the churches meet, the tournaments are over. So far, no festival has ever been allowed to have amplified sound prior to 12:00 to 12:30, and I don't think we need to start setting an example here. I respect the gospel singing, the fact that First Presbyterian Church may be, may or may not be joining in. I like to hear from the church members, I know that other times, there has been a few people from the church have agreed to something, and then the church did not agree to it, and there's been some conflict. But regardless of that, if they're doing a gospel singing, they don't need to have amplified sound that can be heard three or four blocks away.
How do we know? Do you know how loud the sound is? Do we know how loud the amp is gonna be, and where it can be heard three or four blocks away?
Amplified, I'm a mile away, and amplified sound, I can hear most, in those cases.
In most cases. Some of you can only hear about 50 feet away, it just depends on what they're using.
Well, again, it depends on what they're using, so I think it teaches, you give them carte blanche to have the amplified sound at eight o'clock in the morning, that may, that may be fine for this group, but what about when the next group comes, and they want to have rock and roll at eight thirty in the morning on Sunday?
I don't know many churches that are gonna be opposed to gospel music on Sunday morning.
No, but it interrupts their church service. I'm just saying that you're setting a precedent, and I think this is very unusual for this festival. Blue Craft Festival's been going on for 30, almost 30 years, and they've never wanted to do something on Sunday mornings during church services.
Well, I think in order for you to make that determination, this is a new rule, which means...
Exactly.
However, if I may have my opportunity to speak, we have made contact with all the downtown churches, and all of which downtown churches have agreed, that's what our meeting was today. This, we went, as far as the respect we did, that was the first thing that we thought of, so in order for downtown churches to be the face of what it is, to show the unity of that. So, they have been contacted, and we actually not only spoke to the leaders, but the musical directors, which is a part of it, and if you would like to come to the next meeting, it will be Monday at 12:00.
Well, I'll check with the churches, but I certainly, I'm glad that you all met with St. Marcus, First Baptist, St. James, St. Marcus, the Liberty Baptist Church, I'm glad to hear that.
We also met with Bethel AME as well.
Good, I, yeah. Well, if the churches are in agreement to it, I have no problem, but so, that, that's fine, then.
Okay, time's up. Three minutes is up.
All right. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to make a motion, I think, except for... I want to make, before we do that, a motion on the floor, we just hold for a second, then Mr. Holmes, read the ordinance report.
So, you have actually two ordinances that are in play. Section 30 is your, your sound ordinance or noise ordinance, and it appears that the applicable section would be 3106, paragraph 2, and it says, "No person shall use or operate for any purpose any loudspeaker, loudspeaker system, or similar device between the hours of 10 p.m. and 7 a.m. on weekdays, 10 to 7, that's a quiet time, and 10 p.m. to 10 on weekends and holidays, in areas within or adjacent to residential, commercial, or noise-sensitive areas, except for emergency warnings, and accept any non-commercial public speaking, public assembly, or other activity for which a special permit has been issued by the city manager." So, it appears that the city manager can issue a permit. Under noise control, it just says that the city, so that's under section 50, special permits. The city commission may issue a special permit to exceed noise levels established by Chapter 30, Palatka Code of Ordinances, in conjunction with any special event. A special permit may be limited to specific times and specified areas, subject to limitations for waivers set forth in Chapter 30, noise control. So, it does say that, so it appears to me that you, you could, you could exempt a special event from the, the application of the noise ordinance that otherwise prohibit the hours of operation for amplified, hours of use of amplified sound.
Well, I will tell you that in the past, the carnival has started up at 10 a.m. on Sunday, and it was right next to the bridge, which is where you're talking about being, because the bridge noise more or less drives up carnival. It's very loud over there.
And they got amplified sound on the road, right?
Right. Yeah, well, it plays music, and there are children screaming, you know, so if it's in that location, then I don't see why it would be a problem.
That's fine. Commissioner, you have something?
Well, I just wanted to just make the motion, we just want to hear from...
We got a motion pending.
So, you wanna appreciate your motion, Commissioner?
That we accept.
The motion to accept?
Accept.
This is second. Any further discussion?
Questions?
Questions called by Commissioner McCaskill. I favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Thank you, guys, very much, and thank you for the spirited debate.
Just hang out by the bridge.
And we don't bother the churches that's on John.
Yes.
Right.
And not be opposed to hearing gospel music on a Sunday.
But, you know, all the churches are part, me, there.
Moving forward, item 4 on the agenda, resolution authorizing execution of an FDEP state revolving loan agreement, WW540230, to fund sanitary and portable water line repairs on State Go ahead, read caption.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing execution of a FDEP state revolving fund loan agreement for the sanitary and repairs on State Route 20.
I need a motion.
Second, I mean, for, I want some move. Second.
Just motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, and a second by Commissioner Moore. I have a floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we're closed public hearing. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I just want to say, I live on State Route 20, but my attorney said I can vote on this, so I wanted to go on the record, 'cause I don't want people saying...
Don't want people saying what?
That I did something illegal. That I did something illegal, 'cause they like to do that.
So, anybody else that doesn't live on State Route 20? Anything else from the commission? So, let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Brown let us know where she lives.
And that I, and that I would do comeback if you come back.
All right. See enough for discussion, we'll call the court, so I favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. She still lives on 20. Item number 5, resolution authorizing... Item number five, resolution authorizing execution of lease modification agreement to retroactively amend language in section seven point two, article seven, reports, records, audits of the franchise agreement with Hertz Golf LLC to allow for alternative methodologies of financial reviews, a timeline and cost sharing, and authorized execution of CRIs agreed upon procedures engagement letter to perform the fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen, year-end review at a cost of seventy-five hundred dollars. Ms. Becker, after we get the caption.
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the execution of a franchise agreement for Palaca Golf Course between Hertz Golf, Hertz Golf LLC and the city of Palaca, Florida. Second.
So motion on the floor in a second. Ms. Becker, anything you have?
If you have any questions, I'm happy to ask.
My question's already been answered, so I'm good on mine.
On the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Questions called by Vice Mayor Brown. All the papers say aye. Aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item six, public hearing landing board recommendation to annex two zero five Ski Club Road and rezonate in Putnam County R1 HA residential, single-family to city R1, single-family residential, Calhoun Fairs applicant. Item A, annexation ordinance, first reading. How are you, Mr. Lottman?
Good, sir.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as two oh five Ski Club Road, located in section three, township ten, south, range twenty-six east, public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca and providing an effective date.
Second.
Motion on the floor in a second. On the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All the papers say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Item B, rezoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County R1 HA residential, single-family to city R1, single-family residential, for the following property, two oh five Ski Club Road, section three, township ten, south, range twenty-six east, providing for several building and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor in a second. Is there anyone here?
I got a question.
For public hearing. Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Commissioner Borum.
On the, do we have to pay for the, the replating of that, or does the applicant, does?
The applicant paid a fee on there.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I heard about rezoning and.
You don't have to replat it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. I'm good.
They pay for the future land use and for the zoning.
Okay, thank, appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Sure. Good stuff.
I'm done.
Any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All the papers say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, all right.
Moving on, item seven, Ms. Robinson, is she here? City manager search update. Here we go.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
We're currently still taking applications for the city manager search. The search ends on April the fifth. After that, we will start the narrowing process. I just need to follow up with Ms. Driggers in regards to the conversation that we had about following up with the floor of the league, um, about the interim.
They were all in Tallahassee this week, so hopefully I'll start getting some return phone calls.
Did you mention the closing late for the job? We saw it. April fifth.
April fifth.
Yeah, sixty days.
And Mr. Holmes, have you found anything to give the town that we're supposed to have?
I have reached out to them and they have not responded to me. So hopefully I will get a response, though, in the next couple of days. If not, I'll reach out to them again.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hear the question, the questions and all that stuff. The question and all, or is it not with the, with the deal?
No, we're just receiving them now. We're just receiving. About how many? Any of the, um, ones that applied, um, the last time, did any of them reapply again? Not that I can tell. Okay.
We found more people. We talked to more people. We just got new city managers. The last two days, everybody talked to almost had a new city manager.
Um, I just want to share with the commission that I received an email from the town clerk in the town of Melbourne Beach who, um, gave just a glowing recommendation on Mr. Timothy Day, who was one of the candidates that you had in the last round. Um, she, you know, one of the things that we had looked at was his, uh, lack of longevity at the manager positions he'd held. Now, he did have a long career in law enforcement, and she gave, you know, a lot of reasons as to, you know, why he had short stints. And of course, we all know that in South Florida, they're not like North Florida. Generally, every two years, they kick everybody out and start over because of the elections. So, and even in his last position, she said, "They are a very poor community and only wanted a part-time manager," which he couldn't justify, given that the salary was very low, because we did notice that his salary was very low.
Greenville hadn't had a manager, a full-time manager, like fifteen years.
Right. So, and even Seven Lakes, where he was head of the utility authority there, it says, "Tim's desires to work in government," which I believe he has done for most of his career. "After saving Seven Lakes millions of dollars from lawsuits and infrastructure repairs, he really wanted to get back in government, where the challenges are so many and varied." And she did say that he ended up, he left them with brand-new utility before he left. So, um, I think if we can, and, uh, she said that she was from Greenville?
I spoke to the town clerk in Greenville who raved about, um, and she said that they hadn't had a sitting manager in over a decade, and that they started out with a part-time position. His family was in, um, his, his family was in South Florida, Southwest Florida, and because of the instability, what they were doing as far as hiring a full-time, that's what caused it.
I think that was someone with the thirty-seven minute video.
Correct.
Okay, but he has not reappeared this time, to your knowledge.
That's my. He may be a little discouraged.
Yeah.
I understand that. But I'd like to. Just make you count to him. Maybe just.
There's nothing to prohibit you from reaching out to him. I mean, he would have to submit an application, but there's nothing to prohibit you from reaching out to him and telling him that, uh, you know, you would encourage him to submit an application again, resubmit or whatever. If he chose, if he's, if he's used to. Any concerns for the commission with that?
Commissioner Campbell? I wasn't here for the last conversation, so I don't want to open up a can of worms, but that kind of puts us back into the position of where we were last time with adding someone to the pile. And I know that I made that recommendation when we went forth with this, that we didn't want to add anyone to that. But for me, if the, the, I'm not sure of how the dialogue went that last time, but if there was a consensus to move forth with putting this back out there, why would we?
We're still open.
I, I know, but I'm just saying, like, well, why would we reach out to him if, you know, the last time we, the decision was to move forward, because we didn't think that anybody in that group, and I expressed my concern, um, prior to my departure, but.
We didn't have this information.
I mean, if we could have a letter of recommendation when you submit your application, right?
Yeah.
That's not an excuse.
Well, I, and all, I'm, I want to do is clarify, this isn't really the same as adding to the, the, uh, the shortlist. I, I understood the objection that was raised in this process was that once the shortlist was formed, you didn't want to add to it by the commissioners.
Which is correct, but it's, for me, it's like we're going back to try to get somebody to apply for a job that we didn't think that they.
From the first round.
Sometimes people change their minds.
Change their mind. I mean, but if he wants to apply, it's out there for him to see in the same methods that he saw before, so that he still can reapply.
Right.
I, I want to read the first paragraph of this, and this is the clerk from town of Melbourne Beach who reached out to me when she knew, because apparently she has a home here. And it says, "Tim is a super dynamic, easy-to-work-for-who-and-has-a-work-ethic that can't be matched. My husband and I have a residence in Putnam County, and we are in Palaca frequently, which is why I immediately thought of Tim when the job became available. He is so good at revitalization projects, getting grants, and completing projects that were deemed undoable. His previous jobs were short-lived for very good reasons." She lists the reasons. She states that, you know, they miss him every day.
I don't remember him. Did, did he make the shortlist before?
He, he made the shortlist, and he actually was, um, one of the ones that submitted the video, one of the three, that, like I said, the thirty-seven minute video.
Well, if he wanted to submit again.
Well, sometimes if you, if he made the shortlist and he wasn't selected, he may not see a lot of use in submitting an application again, because he already made the shortlist once, and y'all didn't choose to hire him. So I'm just saying, if you wanted him back in the pool, I've said enough.
I don't think it'll hurt to reach out again. I mean, the application process is still open and doesn't close to April fifth. It won't hurt to reach out again. I understand where you're coming from. However.
Any, any further discussion on this?
I, I think we were, I thought we was clear on the first round when we, when we brought the three candidates. Uh, we all unanimously agreed that he didn't make the cut, and we went back out, we were going back out for another round of applicants. Uh, again, I'm not saying he should not submit. If he submits it and he makes it, then that's, uh, you know, that's him. I can't say he, he should not reapply.
Okay.
So let's go, just run the process.
All right, let's run the process. What's the next steps?
After the application process closes on April fifth, we'll start the narrowing process on, I think that date is April the eleventh.
Have we reached out to the league about, um, senior?
That's what, that's what. Areas waiting for.
So, let's.
So when we make the most calls?
Well, yeah, they just got like. Okay. Um, can you, maybe just shoot an email at us and enter commission within the next week, as soon as you find out. So anything else from the commission, in light of this? Thank you for the update. Moving on, administrative report. Uh, Ms. Driggers, you got anything else?
Do I get to go first?
Okay, not, Ms. Robinson. We're gonna let you go first, you got your leg.
Oh, no, no. I'll take my spot at the end.
Good to see you there, uh, Mr. Sharp. Good to see you.
You too, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Lottman, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Uh, Ms. Becker? You select a different position for us. Would you come forward?
Look, I'm back for finance director. I just wanted to let everyone know, we are right in the, I guess, coming down the hill phase of the audit. So, um, our due date, our, it will be June thirtieth. However, we're working very, um, hard to get it done before then. At the same time, I'm ramping up budget, so you will see your, uh, March thirty-first is the end of our six months, and so your reports, your six-month report will be brought to you on April eleventh, and we will be kicking off the budget process the day after that. Um, next week, on Tuesday, um, Ms. Robinson and I are holding a finance and HR type of information session with our department heads, and we've asked for them to bring their, um, superintendents, just to kind of talk about some of the things that we've seen on requisitions and kind of like helpful tips that we're going to give them and start into the budget process. So we will be bringing reports back soon.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes? Ms. Driggers?
We've still got our three bills moving through the Board of Legislature. Nothing has dead yet, which is good news. Um, I understand, um, from Vice Mayor Brown that she spoke with Representative Payne yesterday, and he said that he thought that next week we were going to get some really good news on, probably on the St. John's Avenue grant. So we're, we're looking forward to that. Um, we know that there's been a lot of consternation about St. John's Avenue. I've got some good news from the fire department. Chief Grimes regrets that he could not be here. He had something that took him away. However, he received the ISO evaluation results, and we have kept our ISO rating of two. And we are just a few points away from a one. So, um, that's good news for the fire department. He will make a complete report at the next meeting.
Vice Mayor? Anything other than ice cream?
Yes. Uh, in going to board meeting, they bring back a report on how well things they have, the trust and everything. Um, I have sat there and listened to them tell us how well the pension, their pension, um, trustees, it seems worked really well for, um, most cities, and they said if something happened and they had to close it down right now, they'd be solvent. They are a hundred and four percent covered. I would like to ask that our city managers, our city manager and treasurer, I brought some figures back and look at it and maybe take it back to the boards to see if we could do better for our pension board, um, with the investments and things. And I know some of you sit on the jump, who sits on the jump? One of y'all?
Chris McCaskill.
Okay. I, I would like for you all just to look at it to see if we can do better with our pension, um, and then for the others, but especially the general pension.
We're not doing bad. We're performing at the top, we're performing at the top ten percent in all our pension boards right now. We just realized about a thirteen percent increase over the last quarter.
It, it don't hurt to look, don't. If we don't look, we don't know.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Sometimes. Sometimes, sometimes we fix. When I'm broke, I fix it.
We're in the top two percent. All right, my fault.
But it hurt to look.
And we have talked about going out for RFP. In fact, we just went out for RFP for a plan monitor, and the, and that was just the general. I don't think that the fire and the police went out for RFP, but the general board did vote to go out for RFP on that, and the next step is going to be, uh, the plan custodian. So, which would be what the league does.
Anybody else? Got anything else?
I do have one more here. I'd like to thank you all, um, my, uh, team. We went to Tallahassee and walked the halls and streets of Tallahassee. They tried to bring back stuff and take information to them, and they took such good care of me, they made me stay on task, and I want to thank them for the care they took of me. And the other thing is, I became a great-grandmother again today. Uh, Theodore Brown has, Theodore Brown, the first, Theodore Brown the second, and Lisa have a little boy that was born today.
Congratulations.
So we got, we got two funeral home babies on the same day. We got a flag.
It ain't nothing like.
The competition will continue for another generation.
Well, I got four, I got four generations. We got two.
They're, they're continuing, they're continuing to create.
He just had number three.
You're working on a third generation.
Well, this'll be, this'll be, um, five, five or six when one of them take it.
You're, you're, you're up, you're up by a few years. Anybody, anything else?
Did you want to tell them about being introduced on the board?
I'm gonna let Lucas go.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's a great segue to you, Commissioner Borum.
All right, well, uh, we did, uh, attend the four legal cities, uh, pass, um, from Tuesday through, um, well, no, Monday through Wednesday, and, uh, we were able to, um, hit our senators and our state reps, uh, for our water initiatives, uh, and we're looking pretty good. We're looking good on the House side. They've supposed to be sending everything over to the Senate side, so, uh, we hope that they give us a little bit of grace and, uh, we bring home some, some funding. Uh, we did get recognized from, um, Senator Keith Perry from the floor. Uh, he, uh, received our names and he, what's the name?
Florida Senate.
Florida Senate, yeah. That's why, that's what I said. Um, so we did get recognized by Keith Perry, uh, while we was in, while he was in session. Uh, and the last thing I need to talk about is a couple of things on a, a business note here. If I can ask our acting city manager before to look into our, uh, insurance risk rating to see. see where we're at, and what we could possibly do to help improve that, if you don't mind, please.
We have got our, our experience mod should be out in May for our work comp renewal, and we are expecting it to go up. So that is good news, after it has dropped the last couple of years. Well, it's kind of the reverse, the higher it is, the higher your premium goes, the lower it goes, the better your premium is. So we're expecting that to go down.
And we had our insight, insight, no, inspire, inspire. I happened to be here last week and kind of overheard a conversation when I was up in payroll area, and they had, had a issue that they had reported for a couple of days. They, I don't know if they met their SLA, because it sounded like they was having some issues for a few days, so.
It's an SLA.
Service level agreement.
Appreciate it.
So, but I think they had missed that, based on the conversation I overheard. So we're going to pay these guys this type money, we need to make sure that they are performing to the contract, and we're not getting our finance area and/or any other area impacted. So I think that's all I had. I'll pass the rest of my time, too. The rest of the board.
All right, not to repeat anything that any of the other commissioners said, but I did enjoy my time in Tallahassee this past week. Just very quickly, I just want to thank you guys for coming out. I enjoyed talking with you all about your badges, and how many you can earn, and how you earn them and everything. And please don't be a stranger and come back again. We'll be looking forward to seeing you guys, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They got some badges.
Yes.
Can we get their names? Maybe, I don't know. I was asking me, I was joking. No, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Campbell, I got that.
Just want to say about Tallahassee, there's those trips that you always look forward to advocate with the Florida League of Cities, and there are eight things that we, as the Florida League of Cities, went into these various meetings trying to advocate for. One thing that directly affects Palaca is dealing with the CRAs, and that's something that we're completely opposed to with them doing. So when we're in these meetings, when we're away, know that we're advocating, lobbying for the betterment of Palaca, and I would like to see these things played somewhere on our website, so citizens could see exactly what it is that we do when we go to Tallahassee. So I'll provide you with the legislative actions that we were advocating for a while in Tallahassee, so that it can be put out for our citizens to see.
Thank you. Anything else? Guys, you want to come forward for a second?
All right. All right.
If you guys could line up and turn around and place, place out the TV lamp for a second.
Why?
You do the talking.
All right, so it sounds like we already got someone who's been nominated, but guys, can we get you just to introduce yourself to everyone in the committee?
All right, which one you guys want to, Melissa?
Give me started. Oh, I, oh, down there?
You can stay there.
Come to the mic.
Y'all are making a mistake. We might be here.
I'm Dylan McHugh, I'm a life scout, two thirty-five, part of the Palaca Shrine Club. This is Max Gilson, he is also a life scout. Then we have Logan Sierl, who's a star scout. We have Caleb Bernstein, who just got his life scout, our last board, board of honor, sorry. We have Benjamin Muddrum, who's a first-class scout.
Raise your hand, guys.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand, we call your name.
We have Daniel Trabet, who is scout rank?
Raise your hand.
Scout. And then we have.
Raise your hand, Ben. There you go.
Not the best of names, really good mistakes. Liam Buchan, who is a scout rank. We have Ethan.
Sharp.
Sharp, who is, I don't think, do you have a scout rank?
No, he's new.
He's one of our newer scouts. We have Daniel.
Jamie.
Or Jamie.
Hig.
Hig, who is a first-class. And we also have Daniel Girlshold, who is a second-class.
So, again, guys, we want to thank you all for coming today. We appreciate you standing awake, and we appreciate you guys standing today. And so, again, just we thank you for the progress that you guys are doing, and continue to do great works, okay? All right, and with that, we're adjourned.